Okay, unmuted and video is on.
We call the City of Yamhill City Council meeting to order Wednesday, October 8th, 2025. At 6:34 PM. We have a roll call, please.
Featherstone here.
Askie here.
Aaron here.
Corrigan here. And Kim, Kim, it will be unavailable this evening. She did let us know that she had a work obligation she could not get out of. With that, let's have a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
So we will move into public comments right now, please. Robert Davis?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I have just a quick story I want to elaborate on so that for the general public and people attending either online or maybe later see this video, they will understand. Last month, I had some contractors working at my house and they were getting ready to pour a driveway between my motorhome pad and the sidewalk. And so after they formed it, after two days of work, I told the foreman of the project that I was going to soak my driveway. And by that, it keeps the concrete from drying so quickly that it starts to crack. So I used a lot of water. Don't know how much water I actually used until Kim called me the next week and said, oh, Mr. Davis, are you aware of how much water you have used? And I said, no. She goes, over 7,000 gallons you have used last month. She says, your normal is around 4,4200. And I said, well, let me check. So I checked and I took the meter reading of the meter that I thought I was reading. And I compared it to the information that Kim had given me at the last reading of the meter on the 22nd of last month. And I came up with 34,000 gallons. And I'm going, ooh, oh, this can't be right. I couldn't have used 34,000 gallons in two weeks. Well, so I called Kim up the next day and I said, look, can you send somebody out from Public Works? And have them explain to me, you know, basically how to read this meter and maybe if I've got a leak or whatever. So Jason was kind enough to come out one morning. And I walked out the front door and he was already scoping out the top of the meter, the reading and everything. And he says, well, you haven't used that much water. And I said, well, I said, I don't know. But when I read it, I read, you know, 34,000 gallons. And he goes, no, 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 no. He says, first of all, you have to read the meter correctly. You can't read it from this direction. You have to read it from this direction. So if you're standing in the street looking at the top of your meter, you can read it properly. If you're standing on your property, looking at the top of your meter, you're reading it upside down and backwards, which is what I was doing. In addition to that, what he also said to me was, Mr. Davis, if you had a leak, let's say a little faucet running or something that was obscure that you had no knowledge of. He says, this meter has the capability of lighting some sort of LED on it, flashing or whatever. It indicates you have a leak. So for those of you who have this meter installed in your home, all 550 of us, if you have a leak, open your door to your meter and look for the flashing orange or red.
It'll just leak detected.
Leak detected. In any case, so I learned a lot. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bob. I do not see anybody else that has signed up wishing to speak during public comment. Is there somebody here that would like to speak? Do we have anybody online that has their hand up who would like to speak? If not, raise your hand so we can put you on.
There are no raised hands.
Did we receive any letters?
Obviously, any correspondence.
Okay. Then we can move along. Wait to agenda updates or additions? Do we have any additions?
So the only update that I have is that we did receive a second application. That's in addition to the packet really. And I'm not sure how the council is going to proceed with. If they're going to be reviewing both applications today or if they're going to be waiting until this term is out because this would be to fill a term through December of this year. No really additions, just changes.
Consent agenda. Did all council see the email with the financials and everything in there? Through the council, actually, we moved those along so that would just be the council meeting minutes from September. Does anybody have any questions or concerns? We'll give a motion.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
You have a second?
I second.
We have a vote?
Featherstone yes.
S E I.
Aaron I.
Corrigan I. So it's unanimous. We agree that we met in September. So the next is we have a hearing or an ordinance. So this is a, as we refer to as a draft ordinance 25.03. It's an ordinance updating and amending municipal code relating to the membership of the planning commission in the first reading. So before we open this, we ask that all participants be respectful and remember that anything said during this meeting becomes part of the public record. It's our intention to honor all participants' First Amendment right to free speech. However, if anyone online or in person disrupts the meeting, we will take appropriate steps to mute and or remove them. If those measures fail to stop disruption, we will recess the meeting and return within five minutes. So we will call to order a public hearing for draft ordinance D O 25.03. There we go. Yeah, hold it the right way. So the purpose of this hearing is to hear a summary of the proposed changes, take public comments, deliberate and consider this ordinance. Does anybody from the public want to comment on the proposed ordinance? Is there anyone online that would like to comment on the proposed ordinance?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, so without that.
And I did not receive any correspondence.
Okay, that would be the next one, yeah? Does council have any questions for staff on this ordinance?
My question is, so I'm sorry, I was reading through the script and so the purpose is to hear the summary. When do we actually do that? Is that not to like?
Yeah, so we'll close public comment in a moment and then we'll be able to make a motion and then we can discuss it amongst ourselves. So that's.
So you, and then you read it afterwards?
Yep.
Okay.
Just to be clear, you're reading it by title. The hearing is for the public to, for you guys to hear the public on the ordinance.
Okay.
If you would like to read it and poll, you can request that.
Yeah, yeah.
So we don't have any clarifying questions for staff and council? Okay, so we will close public comment. If there are no more questions, we'll entertain a motion to close the public comment part of this hearing. We'll get a motion. We close the public.
I move to close the public comment portion of the hearing.
Wait a second.
I second.
And we have to vote.
Oh, it's right there.
Yeah.
We have to close in a second.
We have a second to close public comment. We just need to vote on that.
Featherstone I.
Askie I.
Aaron N.
We're just closing public comment. We're not deciding the ordinance.
Okay. Aaron I.
And Corrigan I. So the hearing is now closed. And then I would imagine that the council would like to discuss this ordinance. So everybody's aware of it. Everybody's read through it. So effectively what this ordinance does is it would allow council the right to, or the ability to point somebody that was outside of the city limits to the planning commission. If we were in a situation where we did not have anybody inside of the city or if we had a wonderful candidate from outside of the city. So effectively what it does is it puts a tool in our tool bag. We are very blessed to have two people who have applied to a planning commission at this point. We do have at least one person who will be not renewing an application this year. So we'll have two openings. By passing this, that doesn't mean that we have to appoint somebody from outside. That means we have the ability to point somebody outside. As I was talking with Patty for is the, the nice part about that is, is having that tool in our bag is it can take up to a couple of months to be able to put this ordinance into place. And if we were ever in a situation where we had a shortage on the planning commission like we've had for the last year almost. And we had a major land use situation happening in the, in the city, we would not have quorum. And you could actually end up in running afoul of Luba Works. So if somebody was, for example, a gas station was wanting to go in, we could hold meetings on it because we didn't have the proper planning people and it ties them up and they're spending their money waiting for us. We could end up in court and that's not a good place to be. It does not mean by any stretch that we have to appoint somebody from outside of the city. So we have one person that's on planning right now that is outside of the city, who has served us quite well. If that person was to not want to re-up, his term ends at the end of next year. That doesn't mean we have to appoint somebody from outside of the city. That just means you have the ability to.
Right. So right now, though, we have the ability to, to appoint one person. And yes, the information's been out there on the website. But with so many people in town that are not involved with the city. I don't know. I mean, personally, I would rather go door to door and bug people and explain to them what the situation is. And see if they would potentially be interested. Rather than have two people outside of the city that have no literally no ties to the city other than they know people. And if there were, you know, three people on planning and there was something that needed to be voted on, potentially it could go it could be up to the two people that are outside of the city to make the decision.
I see where you're going there.
That's my concern. That's my real concern.
Now, you also have to remember that planning is appointed by council, which means they can be removed by council. And I do understand that concern, but you know, you also don't have to appoint somebody to that that you don't see as a good fit.
Right. I understand that.
So there are protections and there are you know, remedies if you end up with somebody that was not great.
You know, and, and, and I never realized, and, and I thought about this the other day, I went to Newburgh. And when I came home at the Yamhill Carlton split, there's a sign that says something to the effect, Yamhill five miles. And I thought, really? Five miles is this far? And that, that there just kind of you know, a red flag went up because that is a fair distance outside of the city.
Is it at five miles like?
And with the.
As the, what do they say?
It's five miles, it's five miles from the center of town.
And within the 97148 zip code.
Yeah. Of course, I don't know where that ends, but.
Yeah, so.
Like a five mile radius or five driving miles?
Five mile radius from the center of town.
So that would probably.
Is it five miles or three miles?
It's five miles. No, it's five.
It's five?
Yeah.
But it's also includes the zip code.
Yeah, the zip code 97148.
Miss Featherstone, I know you had some concerns before. You have to go.
I need to go to this fire at the high school, so.
Fire at the high school?
I wouldn't worry.
Will it be safe?
Hey, Dan.
Yeah, what is it? The school? That's why she's coming.
So I don't know, you know, where the 97148 ends. I have no idea. Does anybody? Cause I know Ken is in the five mile, he's 5.1 miles actually outside of town. So he must still be in the 97148 zip code. I have no idea where that's at, but.
So.
It's pretty big.
It's pretty big.
Yeah. It looks like it goes up.
So it would be, it seems to me that it would be hard for us to be outside of that zip code within five miles of a radius from the center of Yamhill unless you were in Carlton.
Yeah.
Technically, couldn't somebody from Carlton be part of planning?
No, I'm saying that the zip code ends. Is that right about Carlton?
It looks like it ends halfway to Carlton.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I see. So yeah, on 47 south of town, it goes only about halfway to Carlton. So at, is that Friar Road?
It looks like it's, it ends like quarter of a mile after that water runoff pond area.
Yeah. So let's go a distance the other direction then.
This is the code.
Side things. It's the weirdest shape ever. That's big.
And this is Lafayette. So, yeah.
Wow. That's pretty big.
About middle of the city.
Right.
Well, without having the ability to have Council Featherstone's input on this. And it seems to me like maybe we can just do the first reading. Which, so the way that that would work is if we do a first reading tonight, if it was voted unanimously that we were going to move forward with that, we could do a second reading tonight and adopt it tonight. But right now, it doesn't seem like that is going to happen, which is fine. And that means we can, we'll just do a first reading now and then we'll continue on to the next meeting where we'll have a second reading. So I move for the first reading by title only and the adoption of we're not getting that, whatever.
That's me.
So we're going to have the first reading of ordinance 0546. Well, no, we're not going to do that because it's still going to remain a draft. How would you do that in this case, Angie?
Draft ordinance. And you can just say, if it passes right now, then it would be that, that ordinance number. If it, there are another ordinance comes up in between, it might change. So I would start with draft ordinance.
Okay, so then I would move to, for the first reading by title only of draft ordinance 25-03.
A second.
And.
Askie second.
Then we would have a vote.
Askie I.
I would like to restate that, actually. So what I should have said was, I move for the first reading by title only and adoption of draft ordinance 25-03.
Askie second.
And we'll take a vote.
Askie I.
And what are we voting on Ted?
We're voting whether we're not, we're going to allow somebody, allow council the ability to appoint somebody from outside of the city limits to serve on the planning commission.
Aaron N.
Corrigan I. So the first reading by title only. Do we have that title? So we're reading by title only so that it is draft ordinance 25.03, 0-546, an ordinance updating and amending, amending the municipal code 1.16.20 relating to the membership of the planning commission. And so we've done our first reading. We will have to wait for the second reading for the next meeting. Because we did not pass unanimously. So we will continue this to the next meeting for a second reading. Since the vote was not unanimous, the ordinance must be read at two separate meetings. The second reading will be.
Quick order?
Yeah.
So the first vote is to do the reading and then you do the second, the first reading.
Okay, so we.
So you're voting to go ahead and do the reading to start and then you're voting for the ordinance to pass. So you were voting against the reading.
Which is inconsequential because we were going to read it anyway. Did you want to change your vote, councilman? Do you want to read it? All right, so let the record show that Council parent has changed her vote to the first reading to yes. We will then be so I guess I would need a motion for the first reading, which we just did. We will then have the first reading. Is that correct, Angie?
That's correct.
Fantastic. So draft ordinance 25.03, 0-546, an ordinance updating and amending municipal code 1.16.20 relating to the membership of the planning commission, first reading. And then we need a motion. Or do we just vote on that, Angie?
You just vote on the ordinance.
So let's have a vote on the ordinance. Askie.
Askie I.
Aaron D.
You're still N. Okay, Corrigan I. And since the vote was not unanimous, the ordinance must be read at two separate meetings. The second reading will be held at our next council member meeting November 12th, 2025. Okay, that was smooth. We'll definitely have that in a better order for the next meeting. So I apologize to you all for that. So we will be moving along now to department reports. So we start out, I think, with the city administrator and I'm going to kind of just include the mayor and administrator into the same thing. And then Angie will go to the first slide on the PowerPoint if we could. Yeah.
Burner piles.
Not a building.
Praise God, though. It was a burn pile. I'm a little concerned my kids up there.
Did you guys table something?
No, we get the first reading and it will be moved to the November 12th because we did not have a unanimous vote.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah. Okay, so the mayor and city administrator report. So I was blessed to appear to have the opportunity to attend the League of Oregon Cities 100th Anniversary Conference on a full ride scholarship. So we had, there was 450 people from around the state of Oregon, met in Portland for three days of three and a half days of classes, conferences, networking. It was actually really great. Met a lot of really cool people that are going through similar things in their cities. And to be able to realize it's not just us is fantastic. And to be able to have that networking and to be able to figure out some alternative ways through things was invaluable. It was actually nice. This year, we actually, the city of Portland actually held it and also participated, which is very rare. So in that conference, one of the things that was kind of important, I think, for us here was I attended, we all have to attend an Oregon government ethics class during our terms. So if you guys have not done that, if you'd reach out to me, let me know. We can do a class here on it. Online class, sort of on the rules of public meetings and so forth. One thing that I wanted to kind of go over that was a little bit interesting to me is on counselor social communications. So we're not allowed to speak to each other unless we're in a public meeting, which makes things a little bit difficult sometimes to try to figure out when you're going to have a meeting and these types of things. It was cleared up as O GAC, as they refer to it, is sort of adjusting some of the framework on the rules. It is now allowed that counselors can communicate and ask questions and make decisions outside of a public meeting on scheduling. What day works best for you to have that meeting? So don't be hesitant when Angie sends or I send, somebody sends you you know, a request for a meeting or can you attend? Don't worry on that aspect about clicking reply all. Remember, it is only for scheduling. We're also allowed to attend social gatherings together. So if we all wanted to attend city count, county dinner, something along those lines, that does not need to be noticed. That is not considered a public meeting. Bear in mind, do not discuss city business during that period of time. They make it difficult, but it seems like they're finding their way a little bit. We also had a, there was a class that was there for a city administrator review. Annually, the city administrator needs to be reviewed by at least council. So I did take that class. And I would love it if somebody on council wanted to help out with putting together a review for our city administrator now and the future. Annually, that has been held in November, at least last year it was. It was not a smooth process last year and that process should definitely be updated. And moving forward, staff will also be, at least department heads. But likely all staff will be involved in the review of the city administrator. Council parent brought a bus stop and a strange plastic sign that sits on our street. As we did some research into that, it is a temporary bus stop as the Yamhill Transit is updating and getting new ADA signs and things we will be getting our shortly. It seems that they will also be giving us a, not sure, but it seems like we will have an enclosed bus stop with a bench. Oh. Super cool. We are we are getting a stop sign with flashing LED bulbs for the corner of Maple and Olive Street headed outside of town. That stop sign is run multiple times a day. I think people just aren't paying much attention.
Maple and Olive run parallel with.
Sorry, Main, Main and Olive. That's my dad there.
Have you seen those stop sign, those stop signs?
They're really cool. Sherwood has them. I spoke with the mayor of Newburgh and he said that they put them up and they absolutely did fantastic for public safety.
Front of fireside, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So we're getting one at a very discounted rate. And like actually very affordable. And it, there was a concern about, so it does come with a solar powered battery system. Those batteries are very expensive. All this, this one is warranted for 11.41 years. That's.
Newburgh has one too.
Pretty cool.
And a new one.
Yeah, it's going to be awesome. Merkley Grant working on that. That is to study pipelines for transmission of water. They had a couple of conversations with Jason about that. We're going to be more from high level to like on the ground, like what we're going to do with that. I've spent some time up in the mountains looking at some of our, our ways to get water out of Barney reservoir and some other ideas. That's, none of that is on the city dime. But we're going to focus in very hard in the next month on exactly what we're going to be studying there. And we are expecting the FEMA grant award very soon for our water tank. We'll increase our capacity to 1.1 million gallons. And is that right?
2.1.
2.1.
Yeah.
Which would be actually quite nice for the city. Which would be actually quite nice for the city. And moving on to the next slide, sorry, that was as long as it was, this is even gonna be longer. People in town sometimes, uh, forget about what it is to be a police person. And so it reminded me of Paul Harvey, if anybody, I think there's some people in this room that may not be old enough to know who that is. Paul Harvey was a radio announcer for ABC Radio, he did a midweek show as well as a Saturday show and was quite famous around. The nation for a long period of time and had quite a nice way of putting things. So I would like to have this video played and we can all just think about what to Paul Harvey it means to be a policeman. Those numbers have gone. An interesting fact on those numbers. Um, I recently found out the man that drives the delivery truck that brings food to my restaurant that I manage. Gets paid more than most police officers do. So although those numbers to some seem a little high, it's still very much a blue collar job. And we appreciate everything that our police department's been doing, even being short-staffed. And to thank very much the sheriff's department for assisting, uh, during a time of shortage. So moving on from that, we have the financial report. Oh, we're going to the police department. And you're gonna do this part, Angie?
So for last month, Chief Craven, um, had a motor vehicle crash on first to Maple Street, it was a truck. Versus a PGE pool. Um, attempted to locate a driver on highway forty seven and two forty. Or two, two attempts. Uh, uh, public assist for a disabled vet trying to get a prescription picked up and he provided resources. He did call outs for disabled vehicle driving while suspended at a welfare check. An agency office for a rollover crash on North Alley and Highway forty seven and plus. And, you know, pictures of that pole, I don't know if many people in town noticed because it was taken care of so quickly by the city. Public Works Jeremy was out there to flag it off because school was about to go out when it happened. Pulled up and knocked it right off of where it was supposed to be, so we have a fresh new pole. Cross from TV. Um, S R Livingston, um, back to school, um, he did an M I P at the high school. Um, worked the traffic seatbelt grant, um, did behavior, behavioral safety trust assessment threat training. And a nine one one hang up call out in the new subdivision. And I think that just turned out to be some, uh, construction workers phone called it by accident, so it wasn't, it wasn't an emergency. Um, the police statistics for September twenty twenty five, number of calls, a hundred and eighteen, case reports, six, arrests, seven. Um, citations twenty five, warnings thirty eight, circuit court citations, three. Um, citizen calls for service thirty and officer initiated contacts forty six, um, hours work, um, Keith Craven. A hundred and eighty five, Chris Livingston, a hundred and sixty eight for a total of three hundred and fifty. Um, miles driven, Chief Craven, a thousand fifty six and, uh, S R Livingston. Fifteen seventy four. Any glasses? Alright, and then Public Works, we have wastewater, they prepared to begin Ellie's Garden Lift Station project. Um, and still working on the new water disinfection building. Um, water treatment, continuing work on new water intake project. Water reports were submitted to the state and the daily labs and operational changes due to the changes in flow while they're working on their project. Uh, Streets received the plan set for the South Cedar Storm Project and reviewing costs for South Cedar T cut in. Then reviewing cost repair Eastern Street. For parks, there was a tree removal at Buella Park and monthly maintenance. City Hall, the office manager, city clerk, um, processed monthly payroll and pers. Um, did the monthly court, um, data entry and processing the citations. Um, worked, uh, a lot of additional in HR this month. Worked on court collections and reviewed the water meter reports. That's what she called Mr. Davis. Um, financial manager reconciled all four accounts, the L D I P, we have a checking utility building and mini court. Um, handled the city audit with Red W and the CPAs, um, began training for payroll. Um, and is starting to take on grant writing, so she's working on writing a hometown girl. City recorder created agenda service attendant, uh, attended and ran Zoom for three city meetings. Attended the O A M R Annual Conference in Eugene, that's Oregon Association of Municipal Recorders, lots of great information. There, um, continued to work on the Water District Questions contract and code enforcement at Buella Park. I have taken the code enforcement car out a couple of times, I did, uh, school patrol one day. You know, to go up and down to make sure everybody's code and speed limits. Um, planning increase for variance code interpretation and. So some people asking to build stuff. All administrative staff began planning for Halloween and Christmas tree lighting. Um, utility billing payments and customer service and gathered. Uh, and are still gathering peanut butter jelly for Spread Love Event, um, um, which benefits Y Cap. Um, and painting Yamhill pink for breast cancer awareness this month in October. It was. Biscuit and pickles that actually sponsor the city hall, so that the pink lights that you see as you're leaving this evening. Um, those are all for breast cancer awareness and I'm hoping, you know, as, as theirs come by, we have more businesses down Main Street. Lighten up with those pink lights.
Are those permanent?
They are not permanent, no, they take them down and they will put up new strands for Christmas, which the Y V A is working on. Also, so they're doing bingo to raise funds for Christmas lights, which are white lights, um, that will go along all buildings downtown. So, um, October sixteenth, Bingo Larson House to benefit the Yamhill Downtown Christmas Lights. October eighteenth will be the last day to donate peanut butter and gel- and J, repeat, at City Hall. Will be our next planning commission meeting, um, November fifth, the city county dinner for the council in Newburgh, if you're wanting to. R S V P, I sent out the email, you want to be doing that soon, um, and then. November twelfth will be the next city council meeting. Thank you.
You. That's a good PowerPoint, thank you. So with that done, um, and Chief Craven, uh, was excused for this evening, although Angie did a great job going over the. Reports there, did you have anything, Jason, you would like to add in Public Works?
Um, not if there's any, no questions from council.
I have like a general one about water. Can you tell why this year, like, wh- what was the difference this year compared to last year since we? Because it seems like we've made it through without a curtailment. I was just curious what the difference was, is it just more rain?
I'll say this, we were really close to going to a level two.
And that's what we did.
The difference being, I think, from an operational standpoint. It's not something we like to do, but with the intake structure going under construction. We navigated operations, we were bringing in to the point of like three hundred gallons per minute. Uh, so it was a really low rate that we were bringing in, but our runtimes were somewhere between. Twenty two to twenty four hours until we were shutting down. So if you look at Kyle's time, he was up there quite a bit late in evenings nights, uh, kind of making those adjustments. Not the way you want to manage it, um. But yeah, I mean, as far as the, the nature, the natural kind of habitat of what's happening up there, I, I can't put my thumb on it, um. We've, we've seen, I mean, not to go in too much depth with all this, but we've seen some trends with the tributaries up there. And I think that's, and I've said this before, right, I think, and this is just all theory, but. When Hillsborough is pulling from Barney Reservoir, pulling more, we see, we see our water component drop. So it's kind of like there's tributaries that are kind of just naturally flowing into that Turner Creek that we're receiving. And when they pull at a larger mass, then we see ours kind of drop even dramatically, so. So, uh, yeah, it's operational and then, you know, on top of that, there's that component outside of that source, so. Yeah.
But didn't you also fix a whole lot of leak last year?
Leaks, I mean, it's been said time and time again, I think we're at, I think that's dating back to last year, we're around. I want to say eleven percent, I mean, it's, it's pretty dramatic now how fast. We're able to kind of locate, get to leaks, get them fixed and, uh. With on top of that, I didn't put it in the meeting, but we're looking at these insert valves, we've put them in before. And what they're doing is they're allowing us to shut down the main transmission line in smaller increments because you guys don't have any. Shut down components on your transmission line from the water plant to. Uh, a property, I want to say about three miles of pipe that's pretty much uncontrollable when there's a leak. So when we have to do that, we have to cut into it. I mean, there's water loss up to, I think, we accumulated about a hundred and twenty one thousand gallons of water loss. During our one year of curtailment, where we were in like a level four because of a leak. So we started implementing those insert valves and we're just kind of built off that. So now we get to these leaks, I mean, shoot, you can isolate within sixty, linear feet, fix it. And you're in and out and you have way less water loss.
You guys are doing great work on that.
Yeah, and you know, and on top of that, I will say the industries came so far. I mean, now we're putting in Hydro Maxes that like are forever pieces, you don't have to replace a whole lot, you're just putting in these Hydro Mac. Hydro Mac clamps that are just like, just a godsend to the whole industry, so, I mean, there's a lot going on out there, the.
Good, you guys are doing, I think you're doing a great job.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And I think they all need to know that.
Yeah, one last thing before I leave, I will say we're in a better position with our. Wastewater water than we've ever been, hands down. I mean, we are at the point now in Lagoon One that we're at eight point five feet, typically this time of year, we're at eleven. So, you know, tackling some of this eye to eye stuff and, you know, Kyle and myself, I mean, not to pat myself on the back, but we've done a great job. With managing that wastewater, because I think that's the next one where D E Q is gonna start looking at our permitting and. Things are gonna start to have to get adjusted, so that's the main source right now of our concentration is that disinfection process, so. No, things are looking great, I mean, honestly, from your infrastructure standpoint and. We're getting ready to do more distribution line on Olive from Morris Valley to Camilla. So that's even more linear footage of new line, new distribution, so I think we've tallied up, we're at. Twenty four thousand five hundred ninety six linear feet of new pipe in this city from five years.
Over, over the last five years?
Yep.
And then, again, during the last curtailment, we were, the leak rate.
Oh, geez.
Thirty nine?
Yeah, 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 forty one, so look at that number.
Which is terrible.
Wise, yeah, terrible.
The eleven I just met with Public Works for the city of Beaverton, and they're not at eleven, they're above.
Yeah, 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 I mean.
For comparison, it's very good to have a city that's at eleven.
Yes, very good, very good, very good. Great water, water quality on top, so, no.
Hundred times cleaner than bottled water.
Hundred times better, yeah, and cheaper, so.
Alright, well, thanks guys.
Appreciate it, yep, we'll see ya.
And just so council's aware, if you guys wanted to change this, you definitely could, but, uh. For the purpose of budget and their sanity, uh, the chief and. Um, Public Works have been permitted to be excused immediately after their reports. So they don't have to stay for the, the rest of the meeting, if anybody wanted to change that, just speak up. So with that complete, um, committee reports, I don't see Jenny Morrison tonight, she was going to speak for the Economic Development Committee. Did you want to speak? Sorry, Bob, on?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you for that.
So one of the things I was gonna mention to Jason, if he had already bailed, was one of the objectives, uh, in our. Last meeting is to come up with a list of items that we're going to provide to the planning commission. To update their coding, now, they already went through all the big coding and. Matched it to the state and the federal, so that part's done, but what we want to do is, we want to. Eliminate the possibility of a business coming into our central business district. Uh, who basically would build a glass tower or a, uh, or a, uh. Uh, oh my god, uh, uh, what can I think of, uh, but anyway, something that was, uh. Uh, unusual and.
Something that doesn't look like Yamhill.
Something that doesn't look or feel or even come close to what, what Yamhill was looking like, so. One of the things that we were going to discuss and I wanted to ask Jason about was, one of the things was stormwater. We're going to ask the planning commission to enact something regarding stormwater drains and stormwater because. Currently, I know that there is and we know that there is a storm fee, stormwater fee attached to our water. For the water bill, but we don't know what that fee is going for and whether or not it's been used. So we need to discuss that with Jason and the planning commission both before we approach that. But what we'd like to do in stormwater in particular is to see that it progresses. A little bit better than what it has, currently, what we have is a bunch of storm drains that drain into a creek. That drains into, oh yes, sir, the, the, on Azalea, there is a, uh, storm drain that sits at. Patty's house that comes down to my house, that comes down to my neighbors, that goes down to the other neighbors, that crosses underneath Olive Street. And drain to a creek. That's it, it's not, how can I say this, it's not filtered, it's just raw water going in. And I understand that, that's the way things used to be done, but. That needs to change.
I don't recall discussing that in the E D C meeting.
Well, that's.
I was at that meeting yesterday, basically they're working on.
My personal knowledge of drain system that passes down is. That's my personal knowledge of drain system that passes down Azalea beside my house. In any case.
So as far as that goes, that would probably be a great meeting for you to have with our finance manager. So she could show you with the budget where that goes and have Jason there with you.
And we probably, we have about fifteen, sixteen, maybe eighteen items that we're going to discuss with the planning commission. To see if they're willing to, uh, look at those items and move forward with them.
Fantastic.
So, we're, we're making some progress.
They're working on design standards for the planning commission to, because they have, um. Ran over design standards for building development, so that's what the EDC did a work session.
That is fantastic.
And we pulled from. About ten cities, twelve cities. I personally provided from two, um, and others provided from. So we've got a consensus as to, from all these towns of what they've been doing in their cities and how they've been. Uh, progressing and what they have been doing to make their town better and more livable and more aesthetic and. You know, just those kinds of things. So, any questions?
No, thank you very much, Bob, anybody? Thank you. Uh, next up would be on the agenda is mayor's report, although I. Found that together with the city administrator, so we move on to council reports. Uh, Patty Perrin has a newsletter update.
Yes, so I had a meeting with the mayor of Carlton on Friday. Linda Watkins, nice, nice lady. They are on board with. Collaborating with the city of Yam Hill. To meet with the school, you know, the, uh. What is his name? The. Superintendent, yeah. And I have put a call into him, I have not received a call back yet, but she is, you know, wanting to be involved in that. And she also brought up something else, which I thought was kind of interesting, they had a community gathering. And. There was somebody that was. Addressing all of these things that they brought in from wherever. And. I thought it sounded kind of interesting because they want to collaborate with the city of Yam Hill. As far as. Getting more people involved with the cities. As a whole. Uh, because they're kind of going through the same thing we are as far as new people, new subdivisions moving in. But. The people are not getting involved with council or planning or any of that kind of thing. So. We're going to talk a little bit more about that. And, but anyway, so we are moving forward with the newsletter. And hopefully I can, you know, we can get a meeting with the superintendent and get this going. So that, and, and both of us. Agreed that it would be best to go to all residents within the city, not just the, the residents that have kids in the schools. So everybody would know what's going on whether it be in. Because this is going to have information both Yam Hill and Carlton, not just the city of Yam Hill. So, you know, everybody within both cities will know what's going on in both cities. You know, and not only that, but the schools too, you know, because of the. The two different ones that are there, so I am really excited about getting this going, it's not going to be huge by any means. It'll be more informative. Than anything else. But at least we'll know what's going on, which is a good thing.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, I'm really excited about it.
That sounds very good. Unfinished business. So there's a park fee ordinance that is been tabled until the master park master plan's complete. That. AKS is the one that's putting the master plan together for us, and according to them, it should be complete this month. So we would hopefully be speaking to that next meeting. Lightning ordinance also tabled. Uh, until, uh, review with legislative amendments is completed, and that's something that Walt Windylowski is working on, I believe.
Yes.
Which would then move us to new business, and that is to consider selling the owned, it's a very small flag lot to interested party. There is, uh. Forty-three hundred square foot parcel that the city owns, according to. First American. That it has a, holds a value, and I'd like to look at this, of five hundred dollars.
That was back when the easement was signed, many years ago.
Yes, so that would be something we have to look at. What we would be discussing today is just if the city would be interested in selling it. To a potential new buyer of the home that it is attached to. Uh, this piece of property is used as an easement, I believe, just for the driveway.
So it is, the house is already built, um, the owners, um, that just sold it. Have had the easement, the rights to the easement, which is just the driveway to this house, basically, it goes past another house. Um, what I do know is that previously the city owned more property over there and already offered to sell it. These people didn't purchase it, but now the new, I've had some inquiries, um, of people that are. Purchasing it, wanting to own their driveway as well, so they have access to their house and they own that. I guess could pave it or do whatever they would like with it, um, so I am just letting the council know of it. Um, and, um, making sure that they want to entertain this, I gave lots of information on what previously happened on these parcels were sold. Sold, um. Um, about the, like, the agreement, but it would most likely have to go through legal.
And probably our planner.
And probably the city planner, just to make sure there's not any reason that that is retained a city owner.
So I think the, the idea here is just to get council consensus on whether we would be, we would consider to sell that.
Why, did it say, I didn't see in the packet, was. So the purpose of the unit is because the city used to own something over there? That you needed to get, use that driveway to get to?
I think the city owned more property over there that was sold off a long time ago, if I understand that correctly, this is a remaining a little bit.
Prior to that, you had to use the driveway.
Yeah, so a picture of it is literally just, it's, it's a driveway that's gravel. And I mean, I can understand why a homeowner might have. If you wanted to pave that or something.
There are also some area for this.
So it's a flag lot, you know, the words.
City owns. The route they take to get to the driveway.
Yes.
And the only one using it.
What we'd be doing today is not making a decision on selling it, we would be just sort of directing staff to research. What that would look like and where, what that would lead the city with. Do we have a discussion that we'd like to, we, we don't need a motion or anything, we can just, we can just direct staff?
I would like a motion to direct staff, um, to be able to use legal if necessary, or.
But we aren't just saying, oh, we're selling to you, we would be opening this up to anybody that wants to buy it, correct?
From the little part of research that I have done, it does require cities to, um, give public notice before selling real property. So there is administrative rules into what the city will have to do in order, and I think there would be a public hearing as well.
Now, that information, that would be part of the discovery that staff would.
I would be able to tell you the steps. I mean, nobody else would really want.
I was going to say, nobody's going to want to.
But we can't just, oh, we're going to sell it to you for this price, right, you have to open it to everybody.
I mean, I was even surprised that the city. Had anything over there on ball, I mean, that just was not even logical.
Yeah, you wouldn't know that that was anything other than their driveway. Can we get a motion to direct staff? To research?
Make motion to staff researches the cell of that, uh, flag lot driveway.
Give a second.
Ask you a second.
And we'll have a vote. Oh, and so part of the research would include. Access to the city lawyers as needed and the planner as needed, yes?
Yeah, I'd have to.
And can we get a second?
Ask you a second.
My second, eh?
Are we amending, we're amending the original motion? So then you have to vote on the amendment first, and you all agree. Are we all in agreement that what Shay said should be added to the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Now we vote on.
Unanimously agree to the amendment, now we would have to take a vote on said. amended.
SGA.
Paranoid.
Organized. All right, so staff will be looking into that. Um, the next thing is to consider updating our water utility payment ordinance and policies. Recently, we've had a couple of people that have gotten. Significantly behind on their water bill. Our policies are not necessarily consistent and modernized, the last one that I believe that they were updated was nineteen ninety-seven. Um, although they do fall into. Organ law is, is covered. Staff feels, as well as myself, that there is room for some updating of those policies. Uh, and again, this would be. A proposal that would come to us maybe next month on what those new, uh. The new ordinance would look like. I don't think that it would take much to update these, as we, there's kind of a clear idea of direction that that should go. What it would do is it would make things a little bit more fair for people to live in town. And have kind of a clean and clear idea of what it looks like when you fall behind on your water bill. Um, we've actually talked about putting together maybe even a pamphlet, sort of like an old PSA that says, so you're behind on your water bill. And it will explain step by step what those processes look like so that nobody becomes surprised.
I think it's a good idea, and the only reason that I say that is because I read through. The, the billing and the delinquency and the non-payment and on and on, and I thought, really?
Yeah, I agree with you completely, and with that, can we get a motion to direct staff to. Update said ordinance and policies?
I make a motion that we direct staff to give us a draft proposal with updated water utility payment ordinances and policies.
And a second.
I second it.
And can we have a vote?
Others deny.
SGA.
Paranoid.
Organize. So, moving on, the last of new business to consider new application for planning commissioner. Typically, we make those decisions for new planning commissioners in November. Um, we have one term, is that right, uh, that ends at the end of this year?
Yes, we are still, uh, working to, um, build terms that would be, um, term ending at December. Thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, um, so the applicants that are applying now. It would be a two-month period, or if you guys want it in your motion, you can make it, um, a two-year, two-year and two-month term. Um, but.
Oh, just that, just how, how many, how many, because there's two, currently two openings.
There is currently one opening.
Currently one opening.
Right, and then in.
An opening that will.
And then at the end of the year, we have one planning commission that's planning to leave. And so we know that there is another one coming.
So then the sort of thought is, do we want to choose? From the two applicants that we have, so William King. Or Carol Pendergast, do we want to make that decision tonight, or do we want to? Wait until next month when we do have our second reading of. The outside person, we do have an application from outside of the city as well. Or we could appoint one person now, and then we would have to appoint another person next month.
Are both of these applicants in, within the city limits?
Yes.
What happens to the two months when?
So if we were to point right now. We would be appointing into a term that ends on December thirty-first. So we would appoint that person now.
And just choose to.
So that person, so if we appointed them tonight, they would have to put in an application again.
Yeah.
Immediately, to be then reappointed for the two-year term that follows, two-year term.
Two-year terms.
I mean, the chances of something coming up and like delaying that even more is probably. Somewhat high. Right?
Sure, I mean.
If we don't do two months and two years, that's what I mean, if we just do two months and.
Counselor Thompson, do you have thought?
No. No thoughts.
Counselor Perrin. You want to do, uh, make a two-month appointment, or should, do you want to wait till next month?
So my question with that is, do we have anything pending that would need approval for the planning commission?
Well, potentially, but we do have quorum still. Theoretically, assuming everybody makes it, but you have to have a hundred percent turnout to have quorum, I believe.
Right, no, we have four.
We have four.
There's four.
Yeah.
So I, I, I guess I would be looking at myself and say, do I want to fill a position for two months or, you know, go do that? And then have to reapply in two months, really? No, I wouldn't want to do that. I'd just say, leave it open for two months. Or month, whatever, and then they'll, January first. Right?
Yeah.
There's no reason to not appoint one of them for two months and two years.
Well, if we could do two months and two years, yeah.
Which can. So, but it's really just a procedural thing, right, so we could, we could appoint tonight.
Right.
Just with a, a motion and a vote. Then that person would serve on the planning commission.
Right.
And then at the next meeting, we would just, I think, could we not even use the same application if that person? Decides to re-up.
I don't think it really matters, I, I, I've had in the past them reapply, but it seems it's going to be the same information. They just need to tell me and then they would be considered again. Rather than, you know, that they're wanting to be considered again and then we put them in the pool, but I, I do believe we should. Open it up for, um.
If you have somebody.
Commissioners every time terms are expiring and not just re-up the same people over and over again.
Absolutely, that's the way it has to be.
Right.
So with the commissioners, we, we do believe that one will not be participating in the future, the other two. Terms do not end this year, is that correct?
Two terms end in twenty twenty-seven. One ends at the end of this year and she's only been on for a few months, so I assume she will. Want to re-up at the end of next year, um, and then we have one that is ending and leaving.
Okay.
So technically, uh, the two applications we have, I mean, we would have to pick one for two months and then, and then one in two months, there would be one. Another one open.
But if you have time to volunteer now, we should get them in the, foot in the door, otherwise they're going to lose interest and they may not even want to do it later.
I see that one as well. With that.
I don't know which one of the two.
So, we have. Two people that are currently, uh, so we have Carol Pendergast, and in your packet is her application. And then we have a brand-new person that has just recently applied, William King. And I think everybody has the hard copy of his.
Just a point of information, I did not let, I know Carol is here, but I did not let, um. Mister King know that they were going to be considered tonight, I just said I would let the, I, I wasn't sure.
Carol, have a chance to speak?
Well, I didn't let the applicants know.
That, that's why, that's why I'm asking, will they have a chance to speak before we vote?
If you guys have, would there be questions?
So, obviously tonight, Mister King would be one of the two to consider, as there's only one opening.
Right.
He would obviously not have a chance to speak because he's not aware that we would be considering tonight. Carol is here with us. And again, this is, effectively, we're looking at a one month. Next month, we would typically be making the decision of who would be serving. From January one on.
Well, but there's two months left out of the year.
Yes, but the decision normally is made in November as to who serves starting January first. So we do it a month before, we don't wait until December meeting. So we do it a month before, we don't wait until December meeting.
Right.
My assumption would be in case we run into a dilemma or an issue, we would have extra time and not end up with an unappointed seat. So we can certainly, we we have this information in front of us if we wanted to make a decision. There is no, to my knowledge and through my experience, there is absolutely no formula or end rules for how you choose a planning commission when there's multiple people. I've seen it go several different ways. You could look at it in who applied first, you could look at it by, you know, assuming equal qualifications. Or if something in their application stood out to you as something that, you know, would make them very well qualified to serve. So I guess the first thing to decide is, do we want to take a vote on this tonight and do we want to make a decision tonight?
I make a motion to appoint William Craig King to fill the open spot in the commission in the remaining time that term.
Do we have a second?
I'd like to meet him before I appoint him to something.
Yeah, me too.
So having no second, um it happens. Um then the next question would be, would, do we have a motion to appoint Carol Pendergast?
I make a motion to appoint Carol Pendergast.
We have a second.
A second.
Can we have a vote?
Further, so I.
Uh ask you aye.
Fair and I.
Corey and I. So, we have voted unanimously to reappoint Carol Pendergast, thank you for your volunteer to serve. Uh so that would be obviously for, yeah, so you'll you'll serve regardless through the end, December thirty-first. And assuming that you wanted to reapply for the next term, uh you would have an opportunity to be appointed at our next meeting.
So will we just keep these, this one for the next time around as well?
Mm-hmm.
And it'll just be up for that.
Well, I think we will
I will let him know the situation.
Okay.
We'll reach out to Mr. King and make sure that he has an opportunity to be available at the next meeting as well. Uh and then Carol, we'd also appreciate it if you could be at the next meeting as your, your term is coming due.
Which is the day when?
Uh that I believe is the twelfth of next month.
Okay.
Um
Oh, and you asked council maybe about the next planning.
At the council, you you, because you have been appointed, you would need to make arrangements with our recorder to be sworn in.
Oh.
Uh we've changed the way that that works to more mere organ law on the way that people are sworn into office. Uh so at your convenience, the two of you, you would just meet at city hall and be sworn in, I believe.
We could do that or we could do it at the planning commission meeting.
Or at the planning commission meeting, whichever you folks choose. Um so again, thank you for that, we'll keep uh Mr. King around. And we will also have a a second reading and potentially a vote on outside as well.
Can I ask a question?
Well, sure.
Before you go, because you're on new business, right?
Yeah.
It's part of the uh staff monthly report?
Mm-hmm.
The nine units, what is, nobody explained what that is? What is that?
I can, I can answer, what what are, what's your question?
What is it?
So it's just the beginning stages, someone's inquiring, um they have property that they're wanting to put a subdivision on. So it hasn't even gone to the city planner at this point, it's just they're want to set up an appointment to have a consultation with the planner. So it would be nine units off of Morris Valley, um and I'm just letting the council know about it, um so you guys are aware of what's going on.
And that is part of the thirty-five acres that are
Two acre, it's less than two acres.
There are thirty-five acres of buildable land from our buildable land study that we did, I believe these were identified in
I would have, I'm gonna have to refer all that to the planner.
Yeah.
It is within city limits, so I would assume that was different, but it
Morris Valley goes is within city limits.
It's just
Just across straight from the the current subdivision.
Okay, so, and and this is hearsay, but I talked with someone
We should, we should be very careful with hearsay on record.
No, I
I haven't happened.
I I'm not going to name any names, but I was told
But information that we're not a hundred percent on, just use caution while asking.
Okay, but this was said to me, but that all they're waiting for is the permits. And I said, what? That can't be.
There is a lot more than just permits.
Oh, yeah, no, I know, and that's why, that's why I was a little surprised when I heard it because of the fact that it hasn't nobody that I'm aware of here knows anything about any
This is the very, very beginning of a process, so.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. Which will potentially uh, I mean, it it could go nowhere, it was just an inquiry.
Right.
Yeah.
So. All right, uh with that, we can move along to information announcements, which I believe we've already gone over, but the city-county dinner is in Newburgh, November fifth at six PM. So councillors, I think uh councillor Askey will be going, I will be going.
Did they tell you or was it someone else? Kim that was supposed to tell?
Uh, Karen's the one that writes the check to them, so let Karen know, so she has a total head count so she can send them funds and then there is a RSVP button.
Yeah, I do that.
Okay.
Which I believe I did as well, so that would be great, and if any other councillors are able to attend, it is really cool when cities have everybody there, there's a lot of good information for us there. Um October is breast cancer awareness month, painted pink Yamhills, we have a really cool pink display out in front of our building, I think we we, that was uh gifted to us, yeah, it was a
Um, it was donated by Biscuit and Pickles.
Biscuit and Pickles, that's right.
Um it's catering company out of McMenville, but um the owner lives here in um Yamhill and a part of our economic development.
And then finally Bingo Night of a Larson House for the Yamhill Downtown Holiday Lights. Uh, super good cost, super expensive to put those lights up, so if anybody can go down and uh help out with that, that would be really cool. I have nothing left on here except a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
You have a second?
My second.
We are adjourned.